All right, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, September 28th, 2023 regular meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome our new Commission Secretary and ask him to please call the roll.
Commissioner Ricer?
Here.
Commissioner Leesack?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioners Strongman, Pickett, and Nating are absent.
Okay, but we do have a quorum, so we're going to proceed. All right. Next up on the agenda is the consent calendar, and I'd like to confirm that we have no items on the consent calendar this evening.
Yes, we have nothing on the consent calendar.
Great, thank you. So that moves us on to item three, public communication. The public communication portion of the meeting is reserved for comment about items that are not on the agenda. This means comments which are not about the East Bay Municipal Utilities District CUP before us this evening. Under the Brown Act, the Commission cannot act on items raised during public communications but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Additionally, I would like to remind everyone that not all speech is protected and that I will not tolerate or allow any type of hate speech during public comment at any meeting that I chair. Hate has no place in our community and our words must reflect our community commitment to equality and inclusion for all. So do we have any members of the public who are ...?
Yes, there's four people that are attending online, and one person has their hand raised.
Okay, let's bring them in. Okay, hello, can you hear us?
Hello.
Hello.
Can you ...? Okay, you can hear me. Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Barbara Guinness. I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since 1996, and I wanted to talk to you today regarding the planning for the increase in parking safety and traffic issues at the following facilities: Arbolahto Park, Boundary Oak Golf Course, Carondelet High School Sporting Facility on Valley Vista. In addition to new sporting events, new everyday Lime Ridge Open Space users are being encouraged to park at Arbolahto Park and Boundary Oak Golf Course. These everyday users will be members of the mountain biking community, which will be flocking to Lime Ridge Open Space for the new high-speed mountain bike float trail that city staffers are planning to build in May 2024. So I wondered, before adding new sporting events, other events, and new users to these facilities, please advise how the city plans or studies the effect of these events, which it would bring to the surrounding communities, like traffic congestion, noise, that type of thing. Also advise if environmental reports that evaluate and plan for the increase in traffic congestion, noise, safety issues are being prepared for before moving forward with these new events and activities. The above facilities already have parking, traffic, safety issues, concerns, and any new activities, events planned by city staff just pile on to the existing issues around these facilities. I've contacted the Transportation Commission, but they're not responding, so I'm thinking possibly this is a planning concern or issue. So please advise what planning, studies, etc. are completed before the city approves adding new events to the above-listed facilities. Thank you for your consideration of this item and for your service to the City of Walnut Creek.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. We appreciate it. Do we have any other members of the public who wish to comment at this time?
If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing no one else raise their hand, I think that would be it for public comment from online, and there doesn't appear to be anyone in the public who wishes to speak.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is item four, public hearings. And I'd like to start, as we always do, by asking if any member of the Commission has had any ex-party communications related to items on this evening's agenda. Yes, there is no ... a lot of shaking heads, so we'll move right along. Our first public hearing is with regard to the East Bay Municipal Utilities District Maintenance Facility upgrades and site improvements, conditional use permit and design review application number Y20-059 located at 2658 North Main Street. And we're going to start with a staff presentation by Chip Griffin, who's pinch hitting for Simmer this evening.
Yes, he is, but he ...
The hardest part is getting the PowerPoint up. After that, it's like smooth sailing.
Sharing screen, it's not showing up. I know they are open. We can reduce this. Okay. I don't know. Can you see that? No. It is not in here.
Well, we do have a ... We do have a good staff report from you, so if you would like to just give your presentation, we can follow along with that report, or ...
Maybe we could ...
We have our tech team here to save the day. Excellent.
Right down there.
Sorry, I spoke too soon here. No faith from me.
There's an extra step. Okay, here we are. Thank you, Chair Ward. My name is Chip Griffin. I'm principal planner here with the City of Walnut Creek, and I am here, as the chair said, pinch hitting for Simmer for her project. We're considering a use permit for the improvements. That's why I have notes, by the way. For improvements to the East Bay Mud Facility at 2658 North Main Street, the applicant Najmi is here. Najmi Jalili is here.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, September 28th, 2023 regular meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome our new Commission Secretary and ask him to please call the roll.
Commissioner Reiser?
Here.
Commissioner Lezak?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
And Chair Ward?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioners Strongman, Pickett, and Natting are absent.
Okay, but we do have a quorum, so we're going to proceed. All right. Next up on the agenda is the consent calendar, and I'd like to confirm that we have no items on the consent calendar this evening.
Yes, we have nothing on the consent calendar.
Great, thank you. So that moves us on to item three, public communication. The public communication portion of the meeting is reserved for comment about items that are not on the agenda. This means comments which are not about the East Bay Municipal Utilities District CUP before us this evening. Under the Brown Act, the Commission cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Additionally, I would like to remind everyone that not all speech is protected and that I will not tolerate or allow any type of hate speech during public comment at any meeting that I chair. Hate has no place in our community and our words must reflect our community commitment to equality and inclusion for all. So do we have any members of the public who are?
Yes, there's four people that are attending online and one person has their hand raised.
Okay, let's bring them in. Okay, hello, can you hear us?
Hello.
Hello.
Can you?
All right, go ahead.
Okay, you can hear me, okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Barbara Guinness. I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since 1996, and I wanted to talk to you today regarding the planning for the increase in parking safety and traffic issues at the following facilities. Arbolahto Park, Boundary Oak Golf Course, Carondelet High School Sporting Facility on Valley Vista. In addition to new sporting events, new everyday Lime Ridge open space users are being encouraged to park at Arbolahto Park and Boundary Oak Golf Course. These everyday users will be members of the mountain biking community, which will be flocking to Lime Ridge Open Space for the new high-speed mountain bike float trail that city staffers are planning to build in May 2024. So I wondered, before adding new sporting events, other events, and new users to these facilities, please advise how the city plans or studies the effect of these events, which it would bring to the surrounding communities, like traffic congestion, noise, that type of thing. Also advise if environmental reports that evaluate and plan for the increase in traffic, congestion, noise, safety issues are being prepared for before moving forward with these new events and activities. The above facilities already have parking, traffic, safety issues, concerns, and any new activities, events planned by city staff just pile on to the existing issues around these facilities. I've contacted the Transportation Commission, but they're not responding, so I'm thinking possibly this is a planning concern or issue. So please advise what planning, studies, et cetera, are completed before the city approves adding new events to the above listed facilities. Thank you for consideration of this item and for your service to the City of Walnut Creek.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment, we appreciate it. Do we have any other members of the public who wish to comment at this time?
If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing no one else raise their hand, I think that would be it for public comment from online, and there doesn't appear to be anyone in the public who wishes to speak.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is item four, public hearings. And I'd like to start, as we always do, by asking if any member of the Commission has had any ex parte communications related to items on this evening's agenda. Yes, there is no, a lot of shaking heads, so we'll move right along. Our first public hearing is with regard to the East Bay Municipal Utilities District Maintenance Facility Upgrades and Site Improvements Conditional Use Permit and Design Review Application Number Y-20-059 located at 2658 North Main Street. And we're going to start with a staff presentation by Chip Griffin, who's pinch hitting for simmer this evening.
Yes, he is, but he is sharing.
The hardest part is getting the PowerPoint up. After that, it's like smooth sailing.
Sharing screen, it's not showing up. I know they are open. We can reduce this. I don't know. Can you see that? No.
Well, we do have a good staff report from you, so if you would like to just give your presentation, we can follow along with that report, or?
Maybe we could.
We have our tech team here to save the day. Excellent.
It's right down there.
Sorry, I spoke too soon here. No faith from me.
Okay, here we are. Thank you, Chair Ward. My name's Chip Griffin, I'm principal planner here with the City of Walnut Creek, and I am here, as the Chair said, pinch hitting for simmer for her project. We're considering a use permit for the improvements, that's why I have notes, by the way, for improvements to the East Bay Mud facility at 2658 North Main Street. The applicant Najmi is here, Najmi Jalili, is here tonight to make a short presentation representing East Bay Mud, and of course, available to answer any questions afterwards. Let's see, where are we? All right, what's going to work? Okay, the project site consists of two parcels located along the north side of North Main Street. You can see them here in yellow with North Main Street here, running north, and then the 680 Caltrans corridor to the east. The site's currently developed as a courtyard for East Bay Mud, has been a courtyard facility for many years, going back to, I think, waste management. It's not readily visible from North Main, as the site slopes downhill from North Main down to the Caltrans right away. Access to the site is provided by Marby Lane and Service Road. So as you can see at the top here, Service Road provides the in-access, and the circulation runs through here for work to be done to the vehicles there, fueling, and then out Marby Lane. And as you can see, the site is surrounded by other service commercial uses, there are no residences in the area. Little background, the property was previously owned by Waste Management Recycling and operated as a courtyard for years, as I mentioned. East Bay Mud has been operating at the site since 2015. In the service commercial zone, a CUP is required for the operation of a maintenance facility. However, there are no use permits on file for this one, so with this project that they wanted to do, we will memorialize their use with a conditional use permit. And we'll take a quick look at the site improvements. On July 5th, the Design Review Commission took a quick look at this as a study session. They really had no comments, appreciated the work, and made a positive recommendation to the Planning Commission. Of course, in regards to the CUP. Taking a look at the site, top left is what you see from North Main. The site is behind the businesses you see on the frontage, and then down Service Lane to the photo in the bottom left, that would be at the actual entrance to the facility. Up top is the, oh, top is the, I'm sorry, is the entrance to Service Road from Main, and then bottom left is what it looks like once you get to the facility. And the bottom right is, and you can barely see the shaded box there, right in this area, that is where the large building would go, and as you can see, it's screened by existing trees and shrubs. Here's the existing site. Right now, there's a few structures on site. The first one would be the fuel station, which was approved not that long ago, and I think is still under construction, yep. The existing tire repair shop right next to it, the fleet bays here, and then the admin building there. That's the current, this is the current condition, of course, and as you can see, the covered storage area, and you've got photos here of all these facilities, namely, this one right here, that's the existing admin building. As you can see, they're aged, and the placement is probably not optimum. So here's what they want to do. With the existing site plan up top, which you've just seen, and the proposed site plan here, you can see that the admin building would be moved from there to there, so it'd be demolition of that building, and then demolition of the 19-foot-tall bays up here at the bottom left of the existing, where is my cursor? Right there, anyway. So the new ones would go there. That building, by the way, goes from 19 feet to 30 feet in that portion. The project also includes a new trash enclosure, that would be down in this area here, kind of where the old admin building was, or is, I should say. New landscaping, bioretention basins, site lighting, security perimeter fencing, and motorized sliding gates with security card readers. Those are located along Service Road and Marby Lane. There's no increase in existing floor area on site, just a demo and replace with new modern facilities. And you can see here as a couple of existing and proposed, so the existing admin building, which we saw earlier, that's it there, and then in its new location, and it's even a little smaller, over on the south end of the site, so it'll be moved. And then here's the existing fleet bays, those are at 19 feet, and you can see at the bottom at 30 feet. All the new improvements, by the way, meet all the development standards for the service commercial area, they're not asking for anything out of the normal. Here's a view of the site with some of the proposed changes, and you can see here that fleet building, this is looking towards the south, you can see way down there, that's where the new admin building would be. This is as you get more into the site, you can see, that's the same if you're down on the ground there. This is, I think, I believe this is looking back at Service Road, and then here is from behind the new admin building looking to the north. The facility is found to be compatible with the surrounding uses. There are no residential uses in the vicinity, and access to the, access and circulation on the facility remains the same. Required CUP findings, these are discussed in your staff report and explained or found in the draft resolution. With that, staff would make a recommendation to the Planning Commission to make a motion to adopt the draft resolution approving a conditional use permit for the East Bay Mud Maintenance Service Facility project, subject to the conditions of approval therein. Are there any questions of staff? If not, East Bay Mud is here to give a short presentation.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Any Commissioner questions? No, seeing none, I guess it's.
See if I can do this again. All right.
Time for the applicant presentation. And just to keep in mind, we have read carefully all the materials we've been given and listened to this presentation, so we're ready for you when we can get the slides up.
Is that it? No, that's not it either. Chair. Okay. Yeah.
I told you this was the hardest part.
It is. They improve these things to make them easier, right? I'm not finding it.
I hope we haven't hit your record yet for having to come out here to help us. I don't want to know what that number is, but I hope it's more than two.
That will show up?
Yeah. Shit, is that it?
That's it.
Thank you for the opportunity to present our improvements project at our fleet maintenance facility in Walnut Creek to you. My name is Najme Jalali, I'm the project manager for this project, and we are excited to discuss with you our proposed improvements at this site, and believe that this project will support EB Mod to meet our operational needs, as well as enhance the area around the site. And finally, we would like to request approval for our conditional use permit application from the Commissioners. I'm going to keep my presentation short because most of it was already covered, but I just wanted to point out some, few points to you. I'll go over the reasons we are doing the project, the location of the facility, the existing conditions at the site, I'll skip over the repeating parts, and what the improvements we are planning to do are, and I'll review the site plan and some aerial views with you to point out some specific elements of the project. The purpose of our project is to help EB Mod improve our operational reliability and ability to respond to emergencies by providing a fully functional fleet maintenance facility for our vehicles in the east of hills portion of our service area. The proposed improvements will also help us cut down on the number of vehicle trips to our fleet maintenance facility in Oakland, which will reduce greenhouse emission and fuel costs. The project will also enhance the staff's, our staff's safety and security at the site. The project location was already reviewed, just want to point out again that it's really not visible to the public view, the area slopes downhill from Main Street toward the site, so the site is really at a low point, at not, at lower elevation from North Main Street, and on the east side is screened from 680 by the large trees and vegetations. Again, the existing site condition was pointed out. The only added comment I want to make is that the existing number of parking stalls is about 33, and our project will not change the number, we'll just reconfigure them. And again, the existing condition of our fleet base was shown, just want to point out that on the southern portion, fleet base one and two was already improved in recent years, and that's operational, it's just the northern portion, base three, four, and five, that need to be modernized for our vehicle repairs. And again, that existing admin building, that is non-code compliant and really not safe for our staff, so we are planning to replace it and also move it to the southern end of the site, which will improve the site layout and the traffic circulation at the site. This existing covered storage, again, is also deteriorated, and also from operational standpoint, it doesn't really serve any purposes for our facility, so we are going to be demolishing it with no replacement, and the area underneath it is going to be repaved for parking. The fencing at the site is not in good shape and also insufficient from our standard security standards, and the entire fence will be replaced by East Bay Mud's standard security fencing. She's already went over our proposed improvements at the site, this is just pointing out that we are improving pretty much every corner of the site to make the site more safe, to make the traffic circulation better, to modernize our facility, improve the aesthetics and safety at the site, and also add features like new EV charging stations, landscaping, bioretentions to, for our own goals, to cut on greenhouse emission, for example, and also meet cities' requirements. And also, as part of improving our security at the site, we'll be installing new electronically operated gates at both entrances with card readers, so to increase safety at the site with better controlled access to the site. Again, the number of new parking stalls at the site will stay at 33, which will meet both our needs at the site and also meets the city's requirements. The, as I mentioned, we'll have new landscaping and stormwater management system that will be designed based on city standard details, and as well as the Contra Costa County Clean Water Program, C3 guidelines, and also the landscaping will also meet city standards as well as the green building code requirements. And here are some examples of the trees, grasses, shrubs, and ground covers that we are planning to install at the site. Already saw some aerial photos of the site from northeast view, and also from southwest view. You can see also the landscaping schematic view of them that we are planning around the site. Closer up, look at the admin building, which will serve our field staff, interior layout, which will provide office space, break room, meeting room, and rest rooms for the staff. And again, the fleet bays. And this is an example picture of our standard security fence that will ensure safety of our staff and equipment and assets at the site. This is the standard fence that we install at our facilities. And the Design Review Commission already gave us a preliminary approval for this fence during the July 5th hearing, and I believe it's set to be approved during their final design review approval. And some final notes is that the normal hours of operation at this site is between 6:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. And of course, because we are a 24/7, I mean, as a district, we are, all our facilities can be accessed at any time for any emergency need, for any resources inside the site, the fuel station, or any vehicle equipment, they can be also accessed during non-business hours. And also, we don't anticipate any increase in noise and traffic created by our proposed improvements at the site. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and we are here to respond to any of your questions and hope to get approval for our CUP application. Thank you.
Great, thank you, that was very informative, we appreciate it. Do we have any questions from Commissioners for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, it's time for public comment. So are there any members of the public who would like to provide public comment on this item at this time?
If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. I see none raising their hand, Chair Ward.
Okay, great. I don't see anybody in the chambers who is interested in speaking, so there's nothing to respond to, so I guess you can sit down if you would like, unless there are any final questions, I think not. So at this time, I'm bringing it back to us for comments, questions, deliberations, and maybe a motion even. Okay, Commissioner Lezak?
I'd like to motion to approve conditional use permit, application number Y-20-059, East Bay Municipal Utility District Maintenance Facility Upgrades and Site Improvements at 2658 North Main Street.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commission Secretary, can you please call the roll and record the vote?
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Ward?
Yes.
The motion passes 4-0.
Okay, great, thank you very much for coming, and that's great. So that's it for our public hearings, we'll close those and move on to agenda item number five, which is commission considerations. Do we have anything to consider other than what we have before us?
None at this time.
Okay, great. That brings us to number six, commission member and staff reports or announcements. Anything from a?
Just wanted to let you know that starting January, staff will be bringing action minutes for the commission for approval as part of the consent calendar.
Okay, excellent. Does any Commissioner have any other comments or announcements you'd like to make? All right, I'd just like to recognize Brian Hickey here on my left, who claims, again, that this is his last meeting, and I'll believe it when I see it, because I know how awesome it is to attend our Planning Commission meetings, but I did want to thank you for your many years of service to the Commission and tell you how much I've enjoyed working with you, and I'm really going to miss you, even though I know you have a tremendous opportunity coming, and congratulations on that, and best of luck, and we really do appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Ward. I'd be remiss if I didn't say thanks to this commission, I've truly enjoyed serving alongside you, and I do enjoy coming to these meetings. So anyway, appreciate all the friendships, and I don't plan to be a stranger, so thanks.
Great, glad to hear that. All right, any other announcements, except for people announcing they're leaving, because we're not doing that anymore? Okay, not today. All right, seeing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at 6:27. Thanks very much, everybody.